Hello, Mindy.
Hi, Dr. Brunner.
How you doing?
I'm doing great.
So let me know if the sound of the waves is too loud.
Can you turn them down, Bob, please?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Well, I can mute. I can do that.
He's woke everybody up.
Hi, Ashley, you with us?
Ashley's still muted.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right, Ashley, everything's working. Good day, Agger.
Thanks.
So call this meeting to order. Dr. Brunner?
Yeah.
Dr. Katula? Mr. Pavilis?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sutner? Ms. Shields?
Here.
Dr. Burks?
Yeah.
It's to the fire. Consider our work for which stands one nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cultivating learners who apply skills and experiences to rich society.
An honest student success. We have handbook. We're after twenty, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So attached is the draft of the student handbook. You will see that there is a complete design revamp of the handbook. So it flows in much better with our strategic plan and the design. There are some small changes and one larger change that you will notice I have noted. We have decided to create an email address for each school building for an attendance line. So it's not only parents calling in via phone, they can also email. And then we updated on page eight some of the wording about the health department and ID page and following those guidelines for COVID-19. The biggest change that you will see on page sixteen is that through the conversation in committee through the high school and the middle school, that they would like to allow students to wear hats and head coverings as long as there's no disruption to the educational environment. So that is really the biggest change. And then we added the parental notice for the Student Online Personal Protection Act from page one-seventeen. Obviously, once we know what our different learning models will be for next year, there will have to be some updates to the handbook. And as new regulations come out, I'll have to bring it back and add updates that way also. Any questions?
Great, Agger.
Well, did the group discuss with the email? Maybe David has insights to that. As far as from a checks and balances standpoint, you know, it's much easier to identify a voice on a phone when a student says something. Is there any discussion around how to be verified at times from the email aspect?
There was discussion, not detailed discussion about it, but that we would still provide a verification phone call that parents, you know, submitted that absence. The group felt that it was archaic to only allow parents to call in. You know, it doesn't really go along with access to technology in order to do that. But yes, there was a small discussion there.
That's something we can bring up tomorrow with our principals at our meeting, too. If there's any more information, bring back the board next, next time.
Yeah, the only, Bob, you remember this, the only reason why we had regulations on the hats and the head coverings was because it was counsel from the police department. And I'm sure you, I'm sure you ran by them, make sure they're okay with it. But that's why we it actually came from our law enforcement community.
And we did have in there previously that you wear head coverings if it was religious in nature or medical in nature. But yes, we did have a conversation with our SRL. Anything else?
Looks very nice visually. Very study.
Yeah, great work by Melinda and Christine and the team. I'm bringing it. Sound better of your
Nice modern feel.
Thank you.
All right, anything else before we move on to social studies resources?
Okay, this item was from the social studies subject area committee that was led by our department chair, Jory Ring. Now, they spent about a year reviewing, researching, and evaluating resources that will support our high school social studies courses. I do believe that Jory is joining us virtually today. So she is in the meeting to answer any questions. The group established a criteria that included the alignment of our district 115 standards and also the networks support that standards and evaluated the resources and the content to make sure that it included diversity and also was representative of typically underrepresented groups. The evaluation also took a look at the technological features and capabilities of the resources along with the ease of use from an end-to-user standpoint as well. And so the committee is recommending resources from two vendors that would support world history, history, American government, AP human geography, AP US history, and AP US government and politics. And the quote for those resources are for all for three-year licensing, intend to place the resources on display at the March fifteenth Board of Education meeting and bring it back to the vote for approval at the April twenty-sixth Board of Education meeting. And I also see that Rachel Worrice is trying this, too. She was part of the subject area committee that did this work and this resource. And I want to thank all of those ladies along with those that were involved in making the recommendation for all of their hard work we've been going back and forth for quite some time now to make sure that we can have the best resources available to meet the needs for our students. There also in the board report, I do anticipate some additional costs that would allow teachers to have summer work days to use the resource, make sure the resources are uploaded into Canvas and to provide professional development. So open it up to any questions, maybe myself, or Rachel and Jory, can you?
Well, just to bring up some things that we've, you know, discussed before, and I know, Nick, you've looked at this, too, is that all these resources, and Lynn, I know you have parents that have talked to you about this, work within a context of exactly the timeframe that these things are appropriate for. So they're not out on a tangent somewhere. They're a pretty normal presentation. They're just more inclusive than what some of the things used to be. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Great.
Jory and Rachel kind of tested this. I mean, there's been some mergers. Sendgate bought somebody out. I can't remember who it was. But Sean and I use MindTap all the time. It's a seamless integration with Canvas. It's really not a difficult leap to use.
No.
We trained faculty in two hours, if even.
Yeah, I was talking to Dr. Baughman last week.
Yeah.
About just how seamless it is and how easy of use and how user-friendly it is. And I've always been a big advocate for the Sendgate MindTap sources.
Sendgate bought somebody out and they up their, so what we're seeing is here are textbook companies that have a robust technical piece with that. And so, yeah, it's a real, it's pretty robust. It also lends to adaptive learning. So a lot of the things can be automatically created as well. But that commitment, who's ever the LMS engineer behind that is coming. We should not expect teachers to make those integrations. We, as a district, should have resources so those integrations are there, the shelves are ready to go, so the teachers can focus on teaching.
Excellent. That's a really good point, Dr. Burks, because, you know, with my experience using MindTap and having sort of as be auto graded as I was talking to Dr. Baughman last week. Again, we can focus on instruction rather than having instructors focus so much on the laborious time, the time and energy that it takes it to grade so many different things, especially in social studies when you get to points where you have quizzes and exams and there may be sections that are written. And it just makes a real challenge to do. But MindTap and Sendgate is really efficient as well. So it's a good choice. I'm really pleased with the choice. And I know as we talk, you said, Nick, that we may be able to have some access to it before our next meeting, just to check it out and take a look?
Yes, sir, I can get you some demo accounts. And again, we won't bring this back for approval until the end of April.
Yeah, we have plenty of time to review this. Great, thank you.
Nick, is that the roll-off of the integration that the board is speaking of so that it's ready to hand over to teachers? Is that being planned? Has that been, I assume that's in the pricing and in the conversation or agreement so that all the backend work for our staff is going to be done ahead of time?
Yeah, like Dr. Burks had mentioned, it's going to be seamless. It'll be something that I work with Brian in our tech department to make sure that that integration happens and it's not the teachers that are doing the labor, but that is digitized as much as possible.
When will that, do you know when that's going to be done by handing over to staff?
We'll maybe get that done prior to June, assuming that we have approval in April. We make the purchases in April and then we get the licensing. So we have a month of May in order to accomplish that.
And Ms. Adler, Ms. Curran, when is the middle school social studies curriculum up for you now? Does anybody know that? It just seems logical that if our, we look at our secondary curriculum resources.
Yes, sorry.
We just started looking at the resources this year. We implemented the new resource this year. Discovery Ed.
I'm sure.
In K six, two factions evaluated the social studies resources as well. They had chosen vendor, but then they backed out and had changed their mind and believe they are leaning towards the Discovery Ed, which is what the middle school uses.
Yes, and moving on to your full middle school dual language.
Oh, we also have individuals that will be bringing us as panelists virtually as well. I don't know if Sir Camp or Ryan, if he is on the call.
He's coming on right now.
Okay, thank you very much. So as the board knows, next year will be the first year that our dual language program we currently from kind of our have two hundred and sixty-four students in our two-way immersion program. The program, just in overall, in general, it's students who are Spanish dominant interact with students who are English dominant with Spanish as the principal language instruction in the early grades and then moving on to a fifty-fifty split by fourth grade. As students move into their seventh grade year, the cohort has a social studies class that is spoken in Spanish and then an English class that is in English and in Spanish, so fifty-fifty. Next year, students in grade eight will still have the social studies that is in Spanish. And we're also making a recommendation that students enroll in a newly proposed Spanish elective course to ensure Spanish skills continue to grow as the target for students in the dual language program is to earn the seal of bilingual literacy when we get to high school. We recognize that students that are in grade eight may have different interests and some that have already demonstrated Spanish skills in reading, writing, and speaking, we may not want to take another Spanish course. And so we're not required, we're making it recommended. And we'll work with families individually, determine what is the most appropriate elective selection for their students based on factors such as Spanish proficiency. And so the board should know that this group has been working with October with the VPAC. And there's other options that we have and we have explored. One of those options would be to run a model similar as to what we do in seventh grade where part of the ELA block is also in Spanish as well. We chose to go away from that option because what that would do is that would limit a student's ability in a dual language program to take advanced placement or advanced ELA. And so we would have to almost force the student into that SLA, Spanish Language Arts, ELA block itself. So I have Mrs. Curran is here tonight, Mrs. Adler, and Mr. Camp is on the line, too. Is there anything that I had missed from that description for those three administrators? Any thoughts or questions from the board?
Well, Nick, as you know, we have talked about before, so, and I know this is a small cohort going into eighth grade, and there's only a couple that might really need that extra class to bring their writing and cultural skills up to level. And I realize, you know, it's a matter of recommendation, but I assume we're going to make this a rather strong recommendation if they want to stay within the program. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct, Bob. And also, we would also open it up to students that are native Spanish speakers that aren't necessarily in the ULC program. They may just be in our general education program. And we have seen why it is successful. Mr. Camp is working on a presentation to bring to the board some comparison data for the board to review. And what we have seen is that as students are spending more time in the program, our students in sixth and seventh grade are doing as good academically as their general education counterparts are better. And so we're very encouraged by that. And we'll have an overlay of data for the board to review later.
Great. Thanks, Nick.
If I can also, Dr. Baughman, I want to thank you and Dr. Shimp for the opportunity to talk with the board tonight. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to address you all as well. One thing I think to keep in mind, especially with eighth grade, a lot of the recommendations that we're making with programming are very forward-thinking when it comes to what a secondary dual language program can look like. We are kind of traveling into uncharted waters. There are a lot of dual language programs that really do not exist beyond eighth grade. And that's, and a lot of that has to do with logistics and endorsements and eligibility and things like that. But one of the things we're really keeping at the forefront is trying to give our students as many options for not just, not just their high school programming, but college and college credits that they could get from certain advanced placement courses. We're also keep being very forward-thinking about preparing them for the Illinois State Seal of Bilingual Literacy and allowing them as many opportunities to certify for that because that will carry with it a lot of other additional opportunities. The Illinois State Seal itself is one of the more rigorous ones in the country. Currently, I think they're up to, I believe, last time I checked, forty-six states have some legislation in place. And I think that there's two that are still considering it in their legislature. So even though Illinois is only required to provide credit for Illinois state colleges and universities, it is possible, and I've had experiences with other colleagues and other districts, where you can take the certification test that you use for Illinois. If you do go out of state, you could present that as evidence of language proficiency and potentially earn either college credit or be able to place out of certain language requirements depending on what the degree program is in that state. So our students, if they're able to certify with that, will end up farther along and that seal kind of carries a little bit more weight than perhaps some other neighboring states do where their requirement, their benchmark is a little bit lower. So those are things that are kind of guiding our course design, our program design, when we talk about what we want to embed and what skills we want to target in that eighth grade year. So it's a more, it's a very comprehensive approach that we're looking at as one piece to a larger puzzle.
I think you, yeah, you've definitely got the purpose of the whole program. I mean, that's what it was all about to begin with. And it's a pleasure to see that right along, the entire motion of this has been to not only increase their language skills, but that we're beginning to see evidence that the total academic program can be enhanced by this. So I give you guys a lot of credit. I am very happy to see, and I'm sure a lot of people are, that we're continuing to look at this in a forward way into their high school years.
Yeah, I agree. One of the things I was going to mention was the elective Spanish language literacy. One of the things that I'm really impressed with is the amount of writing that's going to be incorporated into that course, the expository reading, the narrative writing, the argumentative writing, as well as literary analysis. And so as an English professor, I'd love to see this come from the other side and see it in a foreign language like Spanish. So I'm really pleased with what you're doing there. So keep up the great work. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a Q and A. Maybe read the question and maybe Mike will.
This question that we had an anonymous attendee submit has to do with what I had previously mentioned about having an ELA and SLA block as part of a required course. That is something that Mike and our middle school staff and teachers have certainly considered. However, it does limit the student's ability then to have access to advanced ELA. And so at this time, that was the decision that the group has made. Also, though, I will say that that was a conversation that has taken place over the course of months. And it was very strongly considered as we gathered feedback. I don't know that there's a perfect answer, but we erred on the side that to give students choice and families choice based on their preference and where kids are at from a speaking standpoint, a reading standpoint, and a writing standpoint in this Spanish proficiency.
All right.
There's another question?
Is there another?
Yeah, before he gets a question, I'm going to allow.
Can you hear me now? Okay. The, there's a couple of things that from the point of view of the parents need to be recognized. We've been talking about this for really months now. I think there has been a few discussions or at least one discussions with the, discussion with the seventh grade parents going on to eighth grade. And there is certainly the, this last plan was not really presented to the parents. I mean, there's been discussions, but this last piece has never been presented to the parents. I think that I really want to say that. Because there are still, you know, moving pieces and everything. And maybe there was not enough time to present it to the parents. But in reality, the last piece has not been presented to the parents. The, the second thing that, or two more things I think are very important is that the students that take the elective course as being proposed. And the proposed course, I can come back to that one. The proposed, the first outcome of that is that the students are not eligible for high school credit. Those that take this elective or the dual language students. And that is, as we said before, we stated this, this is opposed to the fact that students that take a Spanish one and heritage Spanish at middle school, if they take that course, they can take high school credit. So it's, it seems a little bit not too equitable. I mean, we can always ask the students, right, the dual language students to take the Spanish one or the heritage one, here's heritage Spanish. We believe, and I think that Mr. Camp agrees, that our students right now have a higher level of proficiency that those that at the end of Spanish one or heritage Spanish would be at. So that's just one of the consequences of this decision. The second one is that the only mandatory Spanish course is social studies. We have a lot of a lot of comments from the parents that they may not or definitely are not going to force their students to take this elective, this Spanish elective. Mostly because the students, and this has been conveyed, mostly the students want to take something that is more interesting for them, you know, arts or engineering or whatever, besides their art and music and things like that. And if the students in the dual language, which are free to do that, right, because this is just an elective, they have two choices. One, they can go and take an easy step into Spanish one and then get their high school credit by not doing too much work, which I don't think that's kind of the intention of our program. Or second, if they don't take this elective, then what's going to happen is that the dual language students will have only one subject in Spanish, which would be social studies, which is diminishing immensely the benefits of the dual language. So they, they will, they will have only, only one course. I mean, they're, and if we had some, some resources and we could have, I don't know, science being taught in the Spanish or something like that, at least you have a little bit of balance. But that, that situation really goes in detriment for the program and in detriment for the students because they wouldn't be reinforcing their Spanish. We wouldn't have any other Spanish language arts course that would continue on improving their skills. So those are the, some of the consequences of this, which have to be very carefully I'm sure they're probably very carefully studied. It's just that, I mean, we as parents do not understand very specifically what, what's what are, what's the rationale for all that. The other, the other part, the last thing I want to say is that the, the language on the proposal says that the proposed course standards align with the WIDA Spanish Language Arts or the Illinois State Board of Education Common Course ELA standards. And that's what would be done if we just do And that's what would be done if we just do, uh, uh, a regular Spanish period in the curriculum. And you kind of something like the seventh grade, it is right, is right now. So, uh, so that's another aspect of this and, and that's what Mr. Camp said. Well, if we, if we do an English and the Spanish language arts within, uh, the curriculum, that would convey or that would be, uh, with the, with the core standard as, as the core of, of the curriculum. So, uh, there is few things here that, uh, that we're really as parents do not understand very well. We, uh, we see some consequences that, uh, the way we look at it, they seem to be in detriment of the value of the program and the interest of the, of the students mainly, you know? And, um, and, and there is a significant number of parents that, um, have, uh, that'll understand that this is the situation in which we are.
So Jorge, if I understand you, y- your thought is to maintain the integrity of the reinforcement of the language, you would like to see another core class taught in Spanish?
Well, I, I, that, you know, I, I don't want to say specifically that, but, uh, because I'm.
I'm thinking it always has to be that way, right?
Like I'm, I'm not the educator, right? I mean, I, I, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm just expressing here the concerns from the parents. And again, it's a, it's a very significant number of parents, because all of them have said, I'm not gonna let my kid go to, to that class. They need to, to have some fun, because after all these years, they need to do what they really want to do, which is very appropriate. So, um, um, you know, we, we, we talked about, Mr. Camp talked, talked about doing that particular course, a more about literacy, I mean, uh, more literature and I imagine more writing and more reading and stuff like that. So some parents didn't like the idea, because they would say, well, that's gonna be very difficult. Then we're coming out from a very difficult, difficult year. And no, I don't want to, to have my kids doing that. So what's the solution this, yeah, one, one solution maybe, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that is the solution. I'm just saying that, that's, that's for the educators to really come up with. But in reality, yes, the, the students need to have some little, some mandatory, in my opinion, some mandatory language, Spanish language arts in the curriculum in eighth grade. Otherwise, they are probably going to lose that aspect of the reinforcement of their, uh, Spanish proficiency, which is in detriment of their interest, is in detriment of the dual language program.
Certainly, uh, all of just one of the issues that you brought up are the challenges that we face, Jorge. And certainly thank you for your, uh, for your comments. And I know these are, um, situations that are middle and, and middle school and our, um, coordinator, yellow coordinator, Mike Camp has been wrestling with for the last few months. Uh, one of the things that, uh, you had mentioned is about high school credit, um, for these courses. We currently do not offer, um, this elective course at the high school. And therefore, we wouldn't be able to offer, um, high school credit for a middle school course, um, that we're offering unless it was, uh, a similar course was offered without, uh, at a high school. Now, I can research and look into, uh, Illinois School Code to see if they would allow us to do something, um, of that nature. But in, in my experience, I don't think, um, we've ever offered middle or high school credit for a middle school course that wasn't simultaneously, um, at a high school. And so that's kind of one of the, um, one of the things that we needed to take into consideration. Um, also, I would, I would discourage, um, students to take that Spanish one course or that elective course, um, simply because the majority of the students that are in our dual language program, their Spanish proficiencies levels are far beyond, um, what would be taught in a Spanish one, uh, one class. Now, they certainly could, uh, take the course and get high school credit, but it would be, uh, a very simple, um, course for them by the way that the curriculum is designed, uh, and taught. And I would ask Mrs. Adler or, uh, Mr. Camp to reply to any of the other concerns or questions that we brought up.
Absolutely. I'd like to talk about the elective choices. Every eighth grader has two elective choices. And the electives are very exciting and the kids wanna take them all. And I have conversations with parents all the time that, you know, sometimes we just have to make decisions and it's hard, because we wanna take engineering and ceramics and digital photography and being banned. Do it all. Um, so there are two slots for electives. So if a student wants to do this elective, they still have a whole other elective to choose from.
Yeah, that, that, that is correct. But the majority of the students have already have either their orchestra or their band or their choir or things like that, which typically carries over a little bit. Some, some students elect not to do that, but I mean, the majority do that. So yeah, they want to have another elective. And yes, there is hard choices and that's why we're having these conversations, because this, this would be a very hard choice for the parents to, uh, to consider, um, and for the students. And Nick, I, I, I understand, uh, that part of not having a, a course that is corresponding in high school. But those are, those are the things that, you know, about a year ago, before the pandemic really broke off, those were the things that were in the thinking of the program as to how do we move this on to high school from middle school to. I mean, it got disrupted and very interrupted and, and, I mean, I, we, we know what, what else is going on and, and, and everything. But maybe originally, I don't know. I mean, it was probably thought that we would need to have an equivalent in, in high school such that the kids would have their, their credit. But yes, I know you would discourage a kid not to take Spanish one, because just to get the high school credit. But if he doesn't want to do that much work and get high school credit, that's, that's kind of the alternative is, and again, I mean, them, the first one that is saying is we don't, we don't want parents to do that, because that's not the spirit of this program, that's not the spirit of the, of the district, that's not what we want. That's, that's definitely not, that's why I'm saying, that's detrimental to the dual language and to the progress of the students. But I mean, we need to find a solution that is, um, is, I don't know, uh, that is more consequential with, with, uh, with everything that, that surrounds a particular decision, right?
Mr. Campbell, are you aware of what other structures that other districts use at the middle school level? That we're, I mean, we're not the first district that dual language at the eighth grade level. And I just would be curious, for Miss Adler, or for, you know, what other districts do have dual language? And are, are we different? Are we the same? Are we?
Well, to, I, to, thank you for that question to Dr. Shimp. I'm, I'm very fortunate that I came to a district that did a lot of the legwork. And I was able to go over a lot of the notes that happened, that, that, that I was able to find from some of the site visits that were done and a lot of the research that was done in the previous school years. Um, I also reached out to a lot of my colleagues that I work with. I work very, I'm, I'm fortunate enough to have a very good network of, um, of coordinators that we, we communicate kind of regularly and we talk a lot about program and assessment and things like that. Our program is very similar to what you see at a middle school level. The state of Illinois has identified around forty districts, I believe it's a little less than forty, I wanna say thirty-eight is the number that stands out to me, I don't have it readily, that offer, um, a dual language program. The overwhelming majority of them generally stop by fifth grade. There are a lot fewer that continue in through middle grades. And those that do generally offer, um, bilingual courses or courses in Spanish as part of their program in language arts and social studies. Um, and I think from kind of the informal questioning that I gave, I asked, why is that? And a lot of the reasons are because that's where the teachers are, to be honest. There's not a lot of qualified, certified bilingual math and science teachers available. In some districts, it's, it's, it is, it's feasible, that have a very large number of multilingual students that they've always catered to that group. Uh, my colleague in, at one of the Berlins, I don't remember if it's north or south that offers that, actually has a little bit more flexibility, but they've been dealing with a population that's very heavily, uh, multilingual for a long, 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 long time. So they've been able to kind of make that transition with people that they've had in-house. But as far as program design goes, it's very common for those that are extending in through middle school into eighth grade to have their bilingual offerings to their dual language students be in language arts, uh, and literacy, and also in social studies as a backup if they do offer that second course.
May I, uh, may I just, uh, make a comment on this? I mean, there is, uh, uh, of course, and we are talking about Naperville, but, uh, Naperville offers, uh, other courses other than social studies in, in Spanish. And I, I don't want to, to compare ourselves with Naperville District. But what is important from that, in my opinion, is that that is the kind of, uh, forward-looking that we have to have in our program, right? What, 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 where are we going exactly? Why, why can't we think about having not just social studies as a, as, as a being taught in Spanish, but we could have probably science also taught in the Spanish, which increases, gets it at, at least a little closer to that goal, if that's what we want, the fifty percent, uh, English and Spanish, which we hardly ever meet thirty percent at the moment. Uh, but that, those are the, 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 the things that have to be i- in a much broader context. We're going to offer a course that is really suitable for eighth grade Spanish. Then let's have also in the high school, the possibility that they have that course so that they, we can give them the high school credit to these kids that have really gone so well in all their Spanish proficiency. Uh, let's, let's try to bring some other possibilities of a science, uh, Spanish teacher or a math Spanish teacher into the middle school, so that we have more flexibility in terms of the offerings that we're going to offer in the future. So tho- those are the things that, that's what I'm saying. I mean, the inten- one intended consequences of, uh, of the decisions at this particular stage are really somewhat detrimental to the, to the dual language in general and particularly to the students that we have currently. It's the first, is the first group, is the first eighth grade. We are in a very steep learning curve. But those are the things that really need to be considered in a broader program, in, in a look, forward-looking program. Seventh graders are gonna be much better this coming year than with the seventh graders we have right now. Well, that's part of the learning program. But let's make this big vision of what really want, what do we really want for, for dual language kids? But at the moment, concentrating on this back again, um, yeah, it is, uh, maybe it is easier to have, uh, that core standard inserted as well we have in seventh grade now, uh, and allow the kids to have a, another suitable elective for them. But that's, again, it, that, that's, that's the educators that have to, to make that decision.
And if.
Well, yeah, just to.
If I can respond, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was just trying to say, you know, we're coming out of a really difficult year. And as much as I would like to think that all these kids are at the level they should be going into the next year, we know they're not, or they just can't be, just because of the circumstances that they've had over the last year. Certainly better position than many schools, but, but still, you know, we're in a position where a lot of these kids are still catching up. And that in itself makes it a little difficult. And again, we don't have the resources to, to put a teacher in another core at this time. Uh, so, you know, some of that redundancy that's going to be available to some of these students might actually be necessary if we truly evaluate what is their skill level going into next year. Along with that though, I, I absolutely agree with Jorge that we should be looking at broadening this program, not only to bring in core subjects a- at this level, but there are a lot of opportunities outside of our normal educational pattern for, for young people to experience Spanish, uh, activities in things outside of only language and even outside of the walls of our school. I mean, we, we, we do so many things online now. Uh, there, there are many, many opportunities for kids to be working, uh, online out with, with teachers outside of the country that are certainly proficient in Spanish, that are teaching engineering classes and other. And, and I, I agree, if, if we're gonna really expand this to the point that when we, these kids get to be juniors and seniors and they can start thinking of seriously doing studying abroad, you know, and we've talked about that how long now, um, it, it, it's gotta be on our plate, you know? And, and to your point, Jorge, I think what we have to understand is this year just didn't allow for a lot of advanced planning, um, the way maybe we would have liked to, because as you said, we were looking at some of these things before all this happened. But we got, we need to get it back on track and say, okay, what are our opportunities? And possibly, if we're not able to find those resource teachers to come to Yorkville, maybe we can take the children to the teacher.
And I just, just to, to, to quickly follow up on that, thank you too, um, for that, Dr. Brenner. That's another thing that we're, all options are really on the table and I'm exploring a lot of those type of options to see the feasibility of guest teacher. That was a program, for example, that ISBE was sponsoring, that because of pandemic, they've had to kind of roll back a little bit. I don't know what the future of that is, but that's a possibility as well. Um, broadening a little bit more of our recruiting base, also to take advantage of some of the opportunities that ISBE has opened up. Um, tho- all of those things, we're, we're looking at very closely and hopefully we'll have some, some more suggestions to bring for feedback, uh, very soon. One of the things I just wanna also add there too, I actually, I, I live in, in two oh three's district, so I'm very familiar with that program. Their junior high program offers two periods, language arts and social studies. And they also have done kind of what we're doing, where they realize that the world language options are not appropriate for their students in Spanish, so they have actually created an additional elective course for dual language students to opt into if they would like to continue with that program. So the way that our schedule is kind of built up is actually very similar to the structure that they have at the junior high school level. Um, and that's, that's something that I would like to try and emulate as well with some of the successes. And I think we're actually on a very good path to be able to see that. I'm interested to examine the impact of the options that we are presenting, to see if there's a way that we can continue to broaden our, our opportunities for our students as well. Um, but I think that this is a very good start and seems to be in line with a lot of the offerings that we're seeing in some of our neighboring programs as well.
I do wanna share that because this is a big decision. I, um, have directed our seventh grade counselor, Mrs. Saboda. She's gonna have individual conversations with each of the families in the dual language program to discuss the elective, to discuss the choices and have a personal conversation about, uh, the decision-making. So that there's coming up time for individual questions and comments with our school counselor.
We current, so the, the question is, why can't the language arts block be advanced for English and Spanish both paths? It sounds apparent that. This sounds apparent concern as well as a problem that I have. Uh but I have mentioned, we currently have, I believe sixteen students that are in seventh grade. Um dual language at this point in time, um and if we were to go any other option, we would then limit. Their ability to get into the advanced class due to the number of students um this year, if we had a larger population. Uh I believe that could potentially be uh an option, meaning next year we will have two sections. Out of seventh grade, there's closer to forty students, uh and I have to look at the uh the numbers exactly. Determine if we have, would have enough students to run a section. At this point in time, I don't know that we would have enough students that are going into eighth grade to run an advanced. Um section that is, and that usually clear heads, so I think.
Well, why don't we bring this back? Uh you you know, and I know, Mike, you're you're looking at this all the time. So instead of just saying, okay, here's this broad stroke and here's the vision, and I think we all kind of have that. Uh let's start fractionalizing and saying, okay, maybe we could really do this, maybe we could try this particular activity. Maybe this online approach, whatever it might be, maybe a visiting teacher, whatever's available. And 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 put a timeline on it and actually implement it. Uh one, I think that would make parents feel that, you know, yes, when we're listening and and secondly. That that we're making some some steps forward, because now is the time where we're gonna start doing those things. I I understand why up until now, we've been limited to some degree because of resources. And and just planning for everything and not even knowing what the, how the school's gonna be structured, but I think we're coming out of that now. And i- if maybe as as you develop this program, so the next time we have a committee meeting. That you could say, okay, you know, I've kind of looked at these pieces and maybe this particular one, we could start, you know, start looking at. You know, I I mean, it's, it's like college students that go study abroad and they take political science or they take biology at a university in a foreign country. I I know my daughter did that and and boy, they really learn a lot more. You know, because their vocabulary changes, there's so many things that become more necessary for them, so. So if we can just start looking at that and and come up with with a solid piece that's a, this could be something we could try. So maybe if we can go there for the next committee meeting and and have a little bit more, you know, related to that. Since we know that we have a lot of parents and I know Jorge represents them well, uh that that are interested in looking at her.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Was something planned to be brought back next Monday for approval?
Uh it was, but based on our conversation and discussion tonight, we'll delay that until uh April to provide. Uh Mrs. Adler and our counseling staff some time to contact parents and also give Mr. Camp some time. Um to evaluate uh some some more options, so we'll continue the conversation and I appreciate the discussion.
That's that's great, that's great, and that that I I I think. I I think you're just gonna have a smoother transition if if, since now we're we're discovering that, you know, parents. Maybe for whatever reason, didn't quite uh feel that they uh understood this decision that was coming quite as quickly as it did. It'll just, it just, it'll make a better uh better transition.
And um Dr. Brenner and Michael, you said the same thing. Learning doesn't have to happen within our walls anymore, so actually, I think. You know, creating something and and leveraging that for the future of the. Of what future the programming looks like is actually beneficial, because. Really creative, because now we have mixed modality cluster, so we don't have to be self conveying, we don't have to be face to face. There's all sorts of actions we can do. And and Lisa and her leadership teams can explain those things to parents. And maybe you can't deliver everything every year, but there's definitely options in the program that you know in the future, I have this, this and this.
Absolutely. A good discussion, though, I then, and Nick, I I know, you know, we had talked about this and it really sounded like this is the best way to go. But but I can see where, you know, maybe we need some future pieces that go in with this. So uh when parents hear the whole story again, maybe they'll be a little more comfortable.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um and to science and English curriculum for twenty one, twenty two.
Uh yes, this is an informational item, a a follow up from our previous uh discussion. Um when we had the uh high school course guide that was a, that was previously approved, we have two new classes, or three new classes, excuse me. Um that will be offering um next year. Um one is the, in the science department, geology and astronomy courses, those are our new dual language courses. Um and then we are writing, or have written that curriculum um with Wabansee Community College. Um and that is um, that is there for the board uh to look at and to review, and I thank uh our high school. Uh teachers and our science department chair, uh and our teacher Jessica Howell for spending the time uh putting those. Um into a format that mirrors the curriculum uh that we have consistently across throughout the district. Um and then also we have a transitional English uh course uh curriculum as well. Um that is part of an Illinois State Board um requirement, and this course is targeted for students. Um that have uh received less than a four eighty on the evidence-based reading. Uh and writing sections of the uh SAT and therefore wouldn't qualify to take uh an English. One-on-one course um in college, and so they would have had to take a remedial course. Um and spend more dollars on tuition to get into um that entry level English course in college, and this is a year-long course. That will then give them an opportunity to enroll um into a um a baseline college level course um the year afterwards. And so currently, just so the board is aware, we do have twenty seven students that have indicated. Uh that they're gonna take geology next year and sixty four students um that have indicated that they want to take astronomy. And so this is just following back up um from our previous conversations to let the board know that the curriculum uh is being developed. The next steps um for us is to um spend that time making sure that the curriculum is modified and uploaded to the canvas. Uh in the canvas platform, um the will bond, the dual credit courses, Wabansee creates those assessments. And so we don't have to do a lot of assessment creation uh in those courses. Um our learning grading plan parameters still apply, even though those assessments are made from Wabansee. Um we still apply our practices and policies um when administering those assessments. The transitional English course, um those assessments still need to be written, so that work will happen uh over the summertime. The Illinois State Board of Education and the document that I provided does give us some guidelines. Um formal graded writing and analysis assignments must count for at least sixty percent of the final grade according to ISBE. And no single assessment may be fifty percent or more of the final grade, and the course must include at least three multiple graph essays. Um progressing in length and depth, and so uh our English department team. Uh will be working to make sure that when we develop those assessments over the summer, they are in line with what ISBE is recommending.
So, um, I mean, I, I understand this transitional English, I mean, I under- so. It's offered at what point in time?
It is a senior year course?
They're testing below standards junior year based on a SAT, and then you're going to try to intervene. To be able to meet the power requirements, even though we have various college requirements and and training.
It's it's reflective of the math transition course, the pontificals literacy course. Um this course has been sidetracked, obviously, it's been a casualty of COVID with the state, so it's been kind of. Uh cause we have to work with Wabansee and into their cohort process. Uh so uh they're still working to do that, but it's, it's been certainly delayed because we're moving, you know, obviously with COVID and everything with Wabansee and all the other schools. But um this would be a senior, they would take currently as a senior English as well as a transitional English course.
And and students who enroll in this course have to have three uh high school credits in English or.
I think the thing that's really terrific about this course, and I'm very pleased that we're moving in this direction. Is that what we know about higher education English is that the longer these students stays. In school, the more credits that he or she has to earn, and the further they go to graduation. The less likely that student's gonna graduate, and uh as a matter of retention and persistence. This kind of course will help prepare someone to get into college English and not. Have to continue moving forward without doing those remedial uh courses, and it's, it's a real commitment, it's what it is, I'm really pleased, so.
It is, my point, Dr. Brenner, I ha- I know he's gonna help me out here, we should never be, I mean, we have worked really hard to never be in this position.
Sure, I disagree with that.
And it, cause this isn't really high level English either, so I mean, we have to.
No. You know, you, you said, Dr. Brooks, you're getting rid of the lateral moves that so many of these kids have had to make once they've left high school. And they're ending up just paying a fortune for, and and there's really no reason that we can't prepare them. And have them ready to move into their actual classes, so. I mean, this is exactly what we've been talking about for a long time, so we don't have. A majority of of uh students going into college and being unprepared and having to take collateral courses. Uh at a cost, so it, this is the way to go.
Honestly, well, such a successful.
No, our staff.
Our staff.
Our staff will teach.
And actually, um I I do see on the call, we have Megan Seven and Kim Zook. Uh that have been integral and helped develop these courses, thank you, uh for your work, Megan and Kim, is there um anything that she was up?
Um I'm just really excited because I feel like it's such a nice bridge between what we've worked to do in English two and three. And what I know is occurring um college board AP level, um so it's that nice stepping stone so that we're getting them ready.
Right, exactly.
And I think to Kim's point too, I was able to have conversations, since we do have two teachers who are currently teaching. Uh English one-on-one and one-on-two through Wabansee, that we can have those conversations about what our current seniors are in need of skills wise. Um and then obviously what ISBE is providing us through these standards, um and then what uh English one-on-one and one-on-two will require of our students. Um and so knowing that and having that brain power in our department has been really beneficial as we were taking a look at organizing and structuring the the curriculum.
Right, makes sense. Thank you very much.
Uh and then last agenda item, transition.
Yeah, I'm just gonna have each of the transition leaders give about a a two-minute high-level overview. Of kind of the work they've been doing and what the next steps are, so I'm gonna ask Dr. Baughman to go first, he's overseeing a couple of them. Um so scheduling it as well as the um summer fall opportunities.
Uh certainly, thanks, Dr. Schimpf, um like Dr. Schimpf mentioned, I I'm overseeing the summer and fall opportunities committee. This group has met uh four times uh as to date, and will be bringing back some proposals to expand. Academic and social emotional uh programs for the summer, our conversations are to have additional. Academic courses over the summertime that will allow us to remediate skill gaps uh and learning loss. Uh we do intend to bring back some of the programs that we had in previous years, but we will have um a more robust offering, more time. Uh for students to participate in those academic uh programs or expansions. We also took a look at the survey results uh from the families, and we had nearly thirteen hundred. Uh respondents out of the twenty-three hundred individuals who responded to the survey. Indicated that they are interested also in non-academic uh summer programmings, um camps. Um and wellness um opportunities for kids to have connections with peers, uh with trusted adults. Uh and so part of that proposal uh will be the addition of some programs that aren't necessarily a hundred percent academic-based. Uh but also address the social and emotional uh wellness of our students and staff, and and some of the conversations. Just as an example that we have had, is that we do fully expect that we may have some students that have been entirely remote and and e-learning all year. Uh that will be transitioning back into uh into our face-to-face environment um in the fall. And so we wanted to make sure that we had um some intentional programs in place for them to help relieve any type of stress or anxiety. Uh they might, they might have as returning to school in the fall. Uh next steps for that committee um is to to talk about the fall offerings, uh we will be uh proposing as well. Uh we we started with the summer offerings, basically because of the timeline in which we need to make sure that we have. Um programs approved and we're ready to go in the summer. Any questions about the update? Um from a scheduling update, um the scheduling committee uh consists of about twenty-five individuals from kindergarten. Um through high school, we have guiding principles uh that we're using to develop the schedules. And that have to do with providing flexibility, choice and personalization for our families, that we are ensuring the social emotional well-being for for our kids. Um that is engaging, that we're collaborative, uh and then we have a positive uh culture and climate. And also that we are accountable, accountable and focused um on learn. So we evaluated the strengths and the weaknesses of the current schedule and also repeat that parent survey uh data from the, from the community. Um both are on offering e-learning at all levels, that's a, that's a state thing that we believe uh as a, as a today. Um we still have to offer that, um but we do plan on continuing uh with that, but it will look different. Um there will be much more synchronous um instruction, um and we do believe at the seven through twelve grade levels. Um that the concurrent or dual modality instruction um will not take place when possible, and so. Um we would like to dedicate staff members to teach them a core, of course, it's entirely online. And no longer have the situation when possible where we have uh students that are virtually and also in person where the teacher are trying to teach. Uh to both models uh and both modalities. Uh from the elementary standpoint, we are recommending to increase the amount of time uh dedicated in the schedule to math. Uh the group feels strongly that the additional recess at the primary levels is very good for the the social emotional well-being. Um of our students, and so we uh will plan to continue to add that in the schedule. Uh we will also make sure that there is a uh social emotional learning block of time that is dedicated. Uh for our teachers and for our staff um to address the SCL needs of our kids. Um and then we'll also um consider continuing to offer um tutor ser- tutoring services. Uh for our families as well, and also um integrate social studies and ELA uh into um the content areas. From the middle school perspective. Um we also want to separate the e-learning experience for students that are e-wa- e-learners. And no longer have that current uh concurrent instruction uh or dual modality instruction. Um the middle school committee is recommending to increase the math minutes um to sixty minutes daily. Uh currently, we have math uh for one period, which I believe is forty minutes in this, uh in this year. Um and no longer have a uh a cohort model where students um are only with one group of kids for the majority of the day. Um we believe that it was important for them to um be exposed to to different groups and and give an opportunity to make. Um to make new friends. Um and we also at the middle school will continue with an advisory period, um from a YHS perspective. Um that scheduling committee uh will focus on five days a week of instruction. Um either in a full face-to-face uh environment or um in an e-learning environment. Um so we'll no longer have the um two-day synchronous, two-days asynchronous uh learning that will, that will be built into that. Um schedule, they're currently proposing a flex mod schedule, um which there would be a block schedule for ninety-minute periods, four days a week, and then one. Um once a week, they would have a seven-day uh period with approximately forty-eight minutes where students would run through the entirety of their schedule. Um the additional, uh the addition of an access or a flex time uh will be added to the schedule, or at least proposed to be added to the schedule. Um and we'll continue with the office hour um and the lunch block, and also we will maintain that open, open campus concept. Um but making that be an earned privilege uh for students.
Next, the next one, we will bring the survey results to the board, just so you have an idea, we'll send those ahead time. You can see the parent results, the goals and staff results. Next up for your committee, Nick, the schedule is what?
Uh we are evaluating uh year-long options uh for our scheduling committee. Um we have of the twenty-three respondents, four hundred and thirty-one, uh the families responded that they were definitely interested in a. Uh a a year-round um experience uh for their uh for their student. However, uh it should be noted to the board that um the state does not currently allow for multiple district school calendars. And so we'd have to have, uh we'd have to do some work um with the state if it were to make that a possibility.
Right, I need to a roadblock. I've been talking to one of the senators on Friday, uh before the board. Um last week, it expressed that concern. Um and the senator of you was gonna do some research as well, to find out if there's anything that we can work around. Uh in school, go to a lot of student encounters for when school.
I would think would be particularly vital, given this current year.
There is legislation out there, but it is.
Terms of assisting, you know, with. Even in terms of assisting, you know, with interventions and flexible schedules and.
There's legislation, it just, we don't know if it's gonna be approved or moved through by, by the next school year.
Sure. Is, is that, you know, if we, if we had an actual all-year school year calendar, I, I understand. The politics behind that are, are incredibly difficult. But if you didn't label it that way and you just had enhancement classes and summer offerings. That in reality were a continuation, would that be more possible?
I don't know yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I know exactly what you're talking about, thoughts we're having, but I'm just, I, I don't have the answer to that.
Cause we're.
No, it's, it's fair enough, but I was just wondering if we're gonna have to think outside the box. Because I don't think our legislators are gonna move very quickly on this, particularly with the new senate president, uh, that's gonna be an issue. So. Okay. And you know, when, when you, Nick, when you were talking about some of these things before, I mean, I was all broken up. I didn't quite get it. As I remember in the middle school, those. Cohorts were working cross-discipline in some of these groups. It wasn't, it wasn't like moves from class to class in subject matter. Did they actually end up doing that? And if so, are we gonna continue at least looking at that?
Would you mind repeating that? You broke up a little bit.
Yeah, no, no problem. That's what happened to me when you were talking. So, so when, when we start at the.
Cross-disciplinary, um, teaching and projects. That was a big part of your, um, model this year. Yeah.
Yes. So, so we do have that flex core instructional time in this year's, uh, calendar. And I believe what Bob was asking me if that will continue. Uh, and that is that part of the conversation, part of where that committee is, but that will, uh, will continue into next year.
Well, you know, to Dr. Schimpf to add to your comments, Nick, when you're talking as well, it's almost as if, I mean. What we're doing this summer is almost like what in college you call the intersection.
Sure.
And that's really what's happening. And, you know, so maybe even get creative on how you do that as well and offer that. Choice. You know, without calling it year-round, you just have a special intersection and that's just what they do.
And we also, as y'all mentioned, we will, we will look at, uh, based upon the number of we've all learned, whatever models we come up with. If we have space to expand our different programming. Even if it's targeted or a lottery, if we can do it, uh, that's something that's on the forefront of our discussion. So as things start to progress, we start getting more structured for our models and parents are making decisions. That may provide a little bit of flexibility on smaller skills to do some things with an extended career program for the day.
And, and just to put that in, in perspective, of the twenty-three hundred respondents on the survey, two hundred and thirty-six of them identified that they would be. Definitely interested in e-learning and remote, which could then free up some of that physical space to offer that, uh, kind of our full day option. Ten percent response.
Troy's working on the personnel side of things. Uh, we'll probably add to that. Oh, he's, he's here. That's right.
I'm glad you noticed I was here, Tim. Uh, no, we've, um, we've met three times as the team leaders and a fourth time with the entire team. And we've been somewhat struggling to come up with what this group was gonna do. And what we came to realization the other day is we're really dependent upon. What comes out of, uh, some of the other committees. Uh, so in order for us to determine staffing, we have to know what the scheduling is gonna look like. We have to know what the student growth and achievement components are. Uh, we have taken the staff data and analyzed that as a team. And we're gonna pull together the, uh, or as the team leaders. And this coming Thursday, we have a team meeting. We're going to start analyzing some of that and putting together another survey to send out to staff to. To gain some additional understanding. Uh, but as soon as some of the other committee work is done, then we're actually gonna have to kick in the high gear to get some bar work done. Uh, from a personnel standpoint, we're really gonna be doing a lot of procedural things, just like we did. When we created the planned diet committee to, to start this year at this point in time.
Just really trying to get specific on, you know, we had a slew of teachers who said, you know, I'm used to remotely, you know, outside. Who are you? What variables can we accommodate? So that when we, we get to a point where we can match families and grade levels. Um, we have to say where our gaps are and where our strengths are. And then obviously moving forward, there'll be the PD, uh, implementation. And Melinda is our chair in our PD committee.
All right. So, um, what we have done so far, um, is we have met, so obviously, let me back up for a second. Obviously, the different models and schedules will impact. Um, what our professional development looks like throughout the summer and, um, into the school year. And so what we have done is we, um, have met and prioritized all of the areas of. Professional development and trainings that we currently have in the district. And we have ranked them on, um, high, medium to low, as some, the most important and then to. Um, what type of job category. So a gen ed teacher, a special education teacher, a paraprofessional. And then, uh, we now have the results of the staff survey. So our next meeting, we will really dig into those results of the staff survey. And think about, um, what the immediate needs are, um, the availability of our staff this summer. So we know that this year has been a difficult year for our staff. And so when are they going to be available in the summer and what type of, um, professional development we should provide? Should it be? Um, self-led? Should it be in-person? Should it be virtual? You know, what, what are they available to do? And then, um, we'll start planning for, um, summer programming, professional development, and then move into the school year. So, you know, we still have a lot of work to do, but some of the other, um, decisions and some of the other committees will really drive where we go next.
Everybody's waiting next, next committee. The last one, uh, Dr. Marcel, uh, on the screen, uh, he's looking at the student growth and achievement.
Yes, thanks for having me here tonight. Um, so we've met, um, both as a K-12 entire group. And then subgroups from K-8 to nine twelve. At the K-8 level, we've looked at map data, looked at the strengths and weaknesses. Of our growth and proficiency by different goal areas or outcomes. Um, by grade level, building different demographic variables and learning model. Um, unfortunately, we couldn't triangulate the data with formative and summative assessment data. Since tracking, um, those data points weren't required this year. And then at the ninth, uh, to twelfth grade level, we've looked at, like we talked about at the last board meeting. Cross-course grades of Cs or better. Um, and we've just started to look at PSAT and SAT data. One of the things I think that's been enlightening to the ninth, the twelfth grade faculty is that's, there's some data differences. And what's available to the elementary level, um, teachers and what's available to the high school teachers. And how do we define success at the high school level? And how do we link grades of Cs or better to some of informative data or standards or triangulating the data? And you know, since Canvas is new this year. Um, there's been a discussion about what data is available in Canvas to monitor outcomes and standards. And there are, there is some data that's available. And so just sharing that between the different grade levels. There is a thought that some of the elementary, um, teachers may like to. Start using Canvas, but there's no kind of recommendation yet been made. Um, and things that we still have to work on are, you know, we need to look at, well, how many students need remediation? Is it an entire course based on how many students missed a certain outcome? Is it for a specific student who may need a specific intervention or group of students or a particular building? You know, um, and then tying the data, like formative and summative data and triangulated, how do we do that? We still have to look at the effectiveness of some of our major interventions that we've used. K-8, which is Lexia. For reading and Dreambox for math and seeing if usage is correlated or connected to. Um, academic performance, like either on the, a winter map or. Spring math testing. We still need to look at SCL and behavioral data. One of the things that the group would like to look at. Is a data management system that we could host all of our data to triangulate it. They believe that that would help. With, um, looking at data when we problem solve in PLCs. Uh, it could look at the reliability and validity of different questions that we use, both formatively and summatively, to see if we need to. Revise some of the questioning or at least maybe some of the curriculum based on. Um, uh, whether or not a certain percentage of our students mastered it. And the other thing it does is it allows data to follow a specific student from K to twelve. Um, which really isn't available at this point in time in the systems that we're using. Um, one of the things that we would like to look at is what kind of data. Can we have and do we have that's actually actionable? We have a lot of data, but what are people doing with it? And how can we actually, um, work to either accelerate or remediate student learning? And then the last thing I think that we'll need to do is look at whether or not we need to build a growth model at the high school level. That's just kind of a brief overview, some of the things that we've either done. Or, or are looking to do. And, you know, I open it up to anybody who has questions.
So we have a district, uh, employee meeting scheduled, a Zoom meeting for next Monday from five thirty, six thirty. Uh, we're gonna give an update and an overview more specifically on some of the schedules. Uh, we meet with our principals tomorrow and I'm gonna be encouraging them to work with their faculty this week. To start getting more feedback and releasing some of the schedules. David has a faculty meeting on Wednesday. Um, just to get some, uh, information from our, all the staff who, who's impacting. So next Monday night, we'll be able to have an update, um, more specifically. On some of the feedback we're getting, some of the things that are maybe some challenges or barriers, um, that we've received throughout this week. And we'll be coming back in April with a strong recommendation. Um, so we've got a second meeting in April, but you'll have at the committee meeting more definitive plans, um, that we have, um, to give proposals.
But you, you know, Dr. Schimpf and, and Pete, uh. Just listening to what you listed there is an incredibly ambitious, uh. Group of ideas. And it really goes to the core of, of a lot of the issues we've been talking about with, with data management and interpretation. And again, you know, kind of like we talked about our, our Hispanic curriculum. This, this is gonna be a, a piece by piece, piece, a, a chunk of work here because. This is not gonna be something you're gonna get done in one big, big broad stroke. So maybe again. If, it would help a lot, I think, if we could take a look at just one piece of this and say, okay. This is what we're going to accomplish, like, like, okay, who's using the data? And how are they using it? Would be a good start, you know? So i- it, it's, again, the specific, the specifics would be really helpful.
I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, but we figured while we were looking at these type of questions. Like you said, we might as well, like, just like everything we've done during COVID. Look at how we might also be able to use this as an opportunity to, for continuous improvement for our district. And our data system. So we realize it's super ambitious. I think. The question that you just asked, Dr. Bernard, is the question that really most teachers wanna know about. Cause that's really where the rubber meets the road in their classroom.
Right. No, I, I appreciate the fact you, you, you've opened this up because. I think this is where a lot of our frustrations, both from the administrative side and from the board side. And I'm sure from the teacher's side, ha- have, have been happening where we're not always speaking the same language. You know, we're not always viewing the data the same way. And, uh, this is gonna be a key portion. In enabling us to improve our, our, our curriculum. So. Hey, I, I, I give you a lot of credit and, and I know it's gonna be a ton of work.
Yeah, the one thing, uh, you know, not to bait at that horse, but, uh, the one thing that, um. I wanted to mention is that we're trying to, to, you know, also operate from a philosophy of parsimony. Or keeping it as simple as possible so that it's actually usable. And so, you know, if we could develop a system or make recommendations that are simple. And don't require an excessive amount of work, I think it's more likely to get done.
Right. I agree with you.
And distribution of data. That you know that the schedule, when the data is coming. And you can anticipate that data. You're not having to admit it early that yourself, it's coming to you. And you know when it's coming. You know, you. Your e-learners every Monday, um, get this report.
Yep.
So I can use it and then focus on what I need to do. Um, Dr. Schimpf, I think the whole board probably also agrees with this statement. It's been an incredibly, um. Challenging year. I, I, I do hope we can find time for our staff, our teachers, our, um, cabinet. To rest, rejuvenate, reflect. You know, whenever you talk about the demand for programs this summer, I know we have to do all we can to be able to meet that. But I, I wanna make sure we also have some sort of time, almost. You know, that it's exed out, that people can rest and reflect and rejuvenate before they move to.
Side period.
Whatever has to happen, I think you have the entire board's support to be able to do. We've asked a lot from a lot of people. Which includes the cabinet and everybody. And we'd like to make sure that those things are built in because we know it's gonna be a busy, busy summer.
Yep.
We appreciate that. And yes, our, our staff and our cabinet and building of open affairs, if we're committed to that, as you guys know. And as I told the committees, or at least a couple of committees as we were working, we were very fortunate. Um, as you look around other school districts, we're gonna be talking about next year right now. We're not worried about opening school next week or trying to get kids in classrooms and desks. We're talking about next year, which is a huge advantage. And it's a tribute to all the support that you provided as a board and then all the employees. So we're, we're blessed.
There you go. All right, anything else? All right, moving on to operational excellence, immunity and.
And Heather is.
For Heather.
It's usually them.
They don't have anything on the end.
No.
Go Heather.
Uh, so the district issued a request for proposal for custodial supplies for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Uh, the district has not gone out to bid for custodial supplies contracts since two thousand and fifteen. The existing contract was for one year and allowed for annual extensions. Uh, in successive one-year terms. Uh, the current RFP included eighty-two items pertaining to the upkeep of all buildings. The bid opening was held on Thursday, February eighteenth. At ten AM in the district center and the district received a total of four submittals for consideration. And one contract will be awarded pending board approval. Um. The total amount the district spends on a yearly basis with external supplies varies based on consumption, but typically. The district utilizes about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in supplies to maintain the buildings. Um, obviously with this year of COVID, um, our supply amount went up drastically, but typically we spare on that. That amount. Um, once all the submitted bid prices have been reviewed. Then a recommendation will be brought to the Board of Education on March fifth. Um, so if there's any questions. About that process. All right. And then the rest, the restoration of project. Okay, so, um, we have multiple sections of our high school roof that are original to the building and were built in nineteen eighty-six. So the district has our yearly preventative maintenance program in place that's helped extend the life of the gym roof. But with it being twenty-five years old, the district would like to restore about twelve sections of the original roof, which is about forty thousand. Hundred and fifty square feet with the board's approval. Um, these sections are. Uh, our, our music and band wing in the front, where our cafeteria is at. And then down the side of the gymnasium. So I had attached, uh, a map so you can see those sections. Um, so let me. So our last roof restoration project was completed in twenty twenty. We restored the gym roof here at the high school. Um, it was very successful and we were happy with the product that we used. Um, this type of roof restoration is non-intrusive and self-healing. And if something would penetrate the.
And if something would penetrate the membrane, it would seal back up into the heat. So this system extends the life of our existing roof. And if there's ever a leak, Garland would come out and fix it at no cost to the district. The roof restoration will improve the life expectancy of the existing roof for about fifteen to twenty years. We can also add on, so you can do a roof restoration up to three times. So it's not like we have to do the roof restoration and then we have to do a tear off in twenty years. We can do three of them until then we wouldn't have to do a tear off, so we can do that as well. Then this project is part of our long-term capital projects plan to be funded out of our fiscal year twenty-one budget. The bidding process with Garland Commercial Roofing has been completed. And we'd like to move forward to secure installation dates for this summer for the project. The Black Knight product is what we've used the last on our doctoral grade school and on our high school gym. And it's been competitively, competitively bid as part of our master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement. It sets a maximum price that can be charged under the agreement. So the local roofing companies were invited to walk the roof with us and provide a labor price to Garland. The cost for this project, we're approximately four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. This is an estimated cost and doesn't, it doesn't include what could happen also during the restoration project. So we would use the contingency budget would be utilized if there's any other items that came up during the project. I don't know, do you have any questions regarding?
No.
I know you had some conversations with Ashley, so thank you.
Yes, sure.
Hi, we, we did have some conversations and I wanted you to, to address. The cost of what the square footage would be if we had to do a tear off now. And some of your rationale, why you're leaning towards a ten to fifteen years in terms of the building usage.
Rational for ten to fifteen years?
Instead of doing the tear off, putting, by using this product, you know, to kind of, to get us through this first patch.
So this product will, will last up to twenty years, right now we're at twenty-five. So if we, if we were to wait, there, we have to do an infrared scan on all the roofs. You can't use this product if the roof, roof is too wet. So it has to be dry to use the product. So we have an infrared scan on all of our roofs and it's, the, the scan process is you have to be between a one and a thirty. And we are at a six right now, so we're at a very good, it's a very good time for us to do this because it's fully dry. So that way we can use this product. Otherwise, if we were to wait until we get closer to a thirty, which there are two sections of our roof that are above a thirty. They're over by where our chiller is at, it's about two thousand square feet. And they're wet, they're at a thirty-eight. So those two sections, we do have to do a full tear off this summer. So that's a very small portion of the forty thousand, but we don't want to get to that point. So that's why we're using this on restoration instead of waiting to see how long it will last. And then if we get, get too far, then we have to do a full tear off, we don't have any other options. And then that cost is basically double. So right now we're paying about ten to twelve dollars per square foot for this. If it were a full tear off, it would be twenty-two to twenty-four dollars a square foot. So it would double our costs if we had to do that.
Any additional questions for Heather? Thank you, Heather. And then we have some new business and we need some motions, please.
Motion to approve the reservation, as presented, second.
Moved in second, any additional, any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Yeah, we'll talk.
Aye.
Mr. Popovich? Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
The Shield?
Yes.
Dr. Burke, yes. Then we have some hires. So need a motion?
Motion to approve the co-curricular hires, as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, and any additional discussion, we'll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Popovich?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
The Shield?
Yes.
Dr. Burke, yes. And then last, we have transfer.
Motion to approve the transfer, as presented, second.
Moved in second, any additional discussion, we'll call please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Popovich?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katula?
Yes.
Shield?
Yes.
Dr. Burke, yes. And Dr. Schumpf, anything else? All right, so we need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any votes?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.